Okay. Uh, welcome to today's meeting of the Jones Library Board of Trustees. I'm gonna ask you to signify your presence, Tammy.
Present.
Lee?
Here.
Nat?
Here.
Farah?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
And Austin is here. I know of no changes or additions to the agenda. So we now have minutes to approve from the 24th of April. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
24th of April, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Sound moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any changes to the minutes? Farah?
Uh, just one small thing, Tammy called the meeting to order. I would have emailed, I just saw, I just looked at it a few minutes ago.
I was gonna bring that up, so I've already made that correction, uh, that I, so I could send that to...
I thought you would have.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that, it's like, hey, um...
It, it also says 3:28.
It was...
Is it the right set of minutes?
It was 3:28.
Yeah, it was 3:28.
Oh, so my agenda's wrong, I have 4:24, I apparently... Sorry!
That's, that's tomorrow.
Sorry!
Okay, I'm ready, I'm ready to approve the minutes in whatever, for whatever day they are. Okay, let's move by unanimous consent, does anybody object to the approval of the minutes?
No.
Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you for that. Public comment, uh... I don't see anybody in the public, so...
That is so weird.
No public comment. Okay. So, um... The President's report is, uh... Uh, really, I'm gonna just fold it into the Building Committee. Uh, very pleased that nine councilors endorsed moving forward with the project. I thought that was very important, I thought it very important that we had the endorsement of people who, let's say, were not as enthusiastic about the project as other people. And, um, the, the idea that the information that was provided was persuasive to them, it was very important that that was said in public. Uh, that this information resolved their doubts. And that we need to be clear when we talk about the vote in saying that, that what was acknowledged was that the information provided was enough to convince two of the three people who called the meeting uh, to vote against the motion that they had proposed. I think that's really important, and I think we should encourage our colleagues on the Town Council in their communications to make that clear. Um, next, um... Uh, the town has been notified that a town resident has filed a bid protest on our project. The protest centers on the preservation of the Stork Woodwork that is part of the 106 review process. The town has had a lot of experience with bid protests. Bid protests are not unusual in large construction projects. There were three bid protests for the elementary school project that were all resolved in the town's favor. The town is working with the lawyer for the town, the town attorney, who is reviewing the substance of the bid protest and working with town officials to respond to the Attorney General's bid protest unit by early next week. Uh, so that's where we are on the bid, on the bid protest. Um, as soon as the town co- town manager signs the contract with the general contractor, whenever that is, I think we will then be in a position to reconstitute, not really reconstitute, but reconvene the Jones Library Building Committee uh, and begin to think forward as to, um, what the work is that needs to be, um, that needs to be done. Um, the 106 process resulted against something I think was very good, which was the Massachusetts Historic Commission signed off on the memorandum of, um, agreement. As I understood it, that means they have agreed that what we are proposing to do satisfies the Massachusetts Historic Commission and whatever guidelines they are bringing to bear. And again, I think that's important for us to remember that they, um, they looked at what we were gonna do, and they've said, "We agree, this is, uh, what needs to be done, and for purposes of the 106 process." Uh, that's what enabled us to successfully complete this memorandum of agreement. Uh, Sharon, do you wanna say anything about interim space?
Uh, all, all I should say is that, um, Bob Parent is working on that process.
Great, and do we have a sense of when that might be resolved, or still not known?
Still not known.
Okay. Uh, any questions about any of that? Yeah, Farah?
So, is, is, uh, Paul going to be able to sign the contract by the 30th? Or does it all depend about this, uh, depend on what goes on with this bid prot- uh, protest?
I think, um, we are, we, we, we are waiting to hear based on his conversations with the town, um, attorneys. Uh, he is very much aware of deadlines.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're a big part of his, uh, thinking.
Okay.
Okay, anything else about the Building Committee or the bid protest? Okay, um... How about we move to Buildings and Facilities?
Uh, we met yesterday, it was the shortest bill, meeting we have ever heard, had. Uh, the only thing that came up was the new leaks in the atrium, but we all already know about that. Uh, about 22 books were discarded, there's a lot of mold. Um, that was all we discussed, but as Sharon said, this is probably, like, it's not something we have to really worry about, hopefully, at this point.
Can you say more about the mold problem?
Sharon?
Yeah, so this new leak, um, is in the northern, northeast corner of the atrium. And, and, and so it's the drains getting clogged and, and leaking. And, and so the water is going now all the way down to the basement, and, um, so it's the ceiling tiles on both floors, both the main floor and in the basement, it's the, the paint, you know, uh, um... and the books that the water is leaking on, um... Yeah, it's very bad, it's very bad. Uh, the atrium needs to be dealt with, um, this summer, regardless of anything.
Dealt with?
Dealt with, it needs to be ripped out, redesigned, and rebuilt.
So there's no repair that would be adequate to deal with this problem?
Exactly, it is not repairable.
And the dealing with the problem would have to deal with the atrium as well as the mold issues that are in...
Yeah, so I don't know what's in the carpet, you know, we haven't had it analyzed. I do know, uh, anybody with allergies, even with the slightest bit of allergies, if you go downstairs, even without the leaks, i- i- your allergies get flared up very badly, I can only imagine what this added, water damage is doing to the carpeting.
Are there remediation things that can be done in the interim?
Uh, other than, you know, we've taken it all away, we've, we've discarded all of the books that were damaged, the ceiling tiles and, and all of that, um... Uh, uh, you know, ripping up the carpet, we've, we've talked about that in the basement, ripping it up. Um, and we have avoided doing that, but certainly, I think that would help. So if something should happen where, uh, where a contract doesn't get signed by the 30th, ripping up the carpet is something that our team can do.
Um, is there any kind of air purification that can be done?
You know, we, we have, we, from COVID, we still have those, and they're always running, so we're, we're on it, yeah.
And the carpets were cleaned last, in the fall or in the winter, right?
I, I, I wanna say over the winter, was it in January? Um, yeah.
So I have a, just a question, which I, I, I'm just gonna ask, it doesn't need to be answered. Uh, and hopefully, we don't need to do this, but we do need to be prepared with the Plan B strategy, and I remember that we were working on, we were working on that. Um, it looks like we won't need it, but we really do need to be prepared with it, so I hope we can just keep that, keep that process moving. Okay, any other questions for Buildings and Facilities? Okay. Uh, next is the Development Committee.
Development Committee.
Farah?
Yeah, can I ask a quick question? So when you're saying Plan B, Austin, I think we had discussed in our meeting yesterday that we didn't have to focus on that, but are you saying in case between now and the 30th, something?
No, I was simply just reminding myself
Okay.
that, uh, if for some reason we were not able to go forward, we need to
Yeah, yeah.
you know, shift in and thinking about what we just heard about the atrium, no, 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 that no, no, you know, we have to be before the 30th, no.
Okay, we don't like negative talk here.
Okay, talking about no negative talk, let's hear from the Congress.
Yeah, yes, here I am, Pollyanna Edwards. Um, well, I mean, for us, obviously, the big news is we're very happy about, about the vote, and I just wanna endorse what Austin said. Um, we're very happy about the vote. Um, and we're very happy about the conversion of two people who had been on the side of, um, halting the, the progress of the renovation and expansion project to being in favor of proceeding with it. Um, okay, and in fact, I will be meeting later this afternoon with the... with Kent and Ginny, and we'll be figuring out what, what the next steps are. I anticipate that the fall and winter will be very busy. But, uh, I have some, it's unofficial, you know, interesting news. Uh, just this morning, got an email that someone made a $5,000 pledge u- using the, uh, portal, using the donor portal, which is very good, and I was at another meeting, I go to way too many meetings, Austin.
Very many.
And I was sitting at that meeting when another member of the committee handed me a note uh, indicating, um, an additional pledge of more than $40,000 to the Capital Campaign. That happened just this week, and so it doesn't show up in the, in our usual uh, announcement of what's on the Capital Campaign, but it does suggest the truth of what we've been saying is that as people have confidence that the project is gonna go forward, they will indeed not only fulfill, but in many instances exceed the pledges that they have already made. And that, I think, is really all I had, I tended to confuse the Budget and Investment Committee and the Development Committee, but so I'm making an effort not to do that. This is all I have for the Development Committee, and then I'll wait and I'll come back again for the Budget Committee, unless there are questions.
Are there questions for the Development Committee? So Lee, could you remind us of what progress we've made in the Annual Fund?
Oh, sure, with that, okay, yeah, I thought of that as the budget. Uh, the Annual Fund as of, again, I, I only do it once a month, so this is really as of the end of March. The Annual Fund, uh, has secured $116,185 from 413 donors, and that's compared with a little under $100,000 from a slightly smaller number of donors uh, a year prior to this, and of that 413, 119 of those uh, also gave to the Capital Campaign. So we're doing, we're doing well. And I, I also just wanna just underscore the fact that the Annual Fund is what's subject to the famous 80/20 split. The Friends have earned more money that's not inside that contract, and, but that's still available th- to the library through the Friends, so, uh, yeah. And I won't say the word pickleball again.
No, please don't, but, um, is there something that the Capital Campaign Committee can do or is planning to do, assuming the contract is signed? Is there gonna be some event, is there gonna be some...
Well, this is what we, we will certainly be, we, we've talked about this before, and it's a little hard to plan when you don't have any fixed dates, but uh, it might be possible. Anyway, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it today, and there definitely will be some kind of festive moment in relationship to, um, breaking ground. And, and again, it's likely that, I mean, it's, it's, it's certain there will be some large public events in the fall. The summer's not a great time to have fundraising events, but there will definitely be something around groundbreaking. And I, just so you feel sorry for me, my darling granddaughter is graduating from high school in North Carolina in the middle of June, and I am waiting to get my tickets to go to North Carolina in the hopes that I can arrange it so I can be here for the groundbreaking.
So that's mazel tov on the, on the graduation. And we love you, but we can simulcast the...
I, I understand, I'm not gonna...
My question was not about the groundbreaking, which is actually a couple of months away, my question is about the contract signing.
Oh, okay, well, I'm sure that Ginny has, I can't speak for Ginny, but I, I, I'm sure that she's got press releases, and I'm sure she's thinking along these lines. And I'm sure that that will come up in our meeting at 5 o'clock today.
Right, and I wanna reiterate, uh, what I said in the Town Council meeting, uh, which is how remarkable the work that you and Kent and Ginny and your colleagues, um... It's just, it's remarkable, and, uh, the millions that you've raised, and the meetings that you've gone to, and the lunches that you've had, and it's just, um, it's just remarkable. I also think, um, that we were well-served and have been well-served by the clarity, calmness of the town manager. So, um, uh, you know, he's doing his job, and I thought he's done it um, very well, and his being well-organized, clear in what he's asking people to do, calm in his presentation, resolute in his, um... you know, this is, this is what I think, um, I thought that was really quite important, um, for us. And I do think it's important for us going forward to be clear in our communications, you've gotta find a way to describe what we're doing as opposed to the library project. Because the library project is easily elided into the library's project. And I think finding a way to talk about it, which doesn't suggest it's just these group of people in the library who are pushing for it, uh, may be important as we go, as we go forward. Okay. Uh, thank you, Lee. Next, Tammy, Eli, how are you, Tammy?
I'm fine, about to drive to Washington DC tomorrow.
Fabulous.
Yep. Um...
Why are you driving and not flying?
Uh...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, we're driving in two days, we're gonna take it leisurely. Um, we met on the 4th, I mean, on April 8th, and in the packet is Sharon's check-in on her goals, a mid-year check-in. And I don't think this has to be approved, it's really just for information purposes. Um, but if you have any questions or concerns, I'm sure Sharon would be willing to respond. Um, if you've had a chance to look at it, it's really just something she does halfway through, and then she does a full evaluation of her goals in preparation to the, um, annual evaluation.
Yeah, Tammy, let's just pause a second, are there any questions about this? Uh, this in, in information? So goal number five, it says the Jedi Committee is very active, we've released, we've updated the action plan, we've reconnected, we've held staff meetings to learn about existing practices. Again, my question is an obvious one, is there anything that um, the library is doing or ought to be doing, the Jedi Committee is doing or ought to be doing, um... in light of the present climate around, um, BEI?
Um, I will ask Farah to respond to that as the Chair of the Jedi uh, Subcommittee. Farah?
Should I go into my report from our meeting?
Sure, you might as well, 'cause it's combined Austin's question with your report.
Well, a couple, uh, not this past, last week, but a couple of months ago, we met with Pamela Nolan Young and Philip, um... uh, from the D, Town D, uh, DEI Department, and they were, I mean, I talked about this at our last meeting, but they filled us in on what they were doing, and Pamela seemed kind of, she's, she's really worried about what's going on. And once as, she's, Paul seems to be sticking to the message that this is important, we're gonna support it, but, you know, we don't know what's coming in the next few months. So to that end, we did discuss it in our DE, in our Je- Jedi meeting last, uh, week. I mean, even when Pat, with the meeting before. But we have been talking more and more about programming and seeing how we can get the community more engaged, figure out what's going on, what they want. And to that end, um, one of our, our focus last, last week was on, we need, we have been wanting to get a youth member in, as part of our committee, we did have one last year, uh, Walter, but he graduated, and, um, one of our men, members, Raphael, has been in talks with the high school, uh, with some of the teachers there, so we're getting a little closer to that. We, we're talking a lot about whether we get a student to do it for credit, to get reimbursed. So Sharon had actually talked about the fact that she would want to pay a student member of the committee. I'm not sure where the funds are coming from, but I'm gonna let Sharon speak to that. But right now, we're still just, you know, trying to figure out how how we can help, especially if, if we move forward with the project, then it's about programming and how we can help make sure programming represents the community and gives the community what it wants. So we've talked about a lot of little things. Sharon also talked about the ESL program being cut, funding being cut, and what Lynn was planning to do. So there's lots of conversations going on. I am aware of the fact that we don't know where we will be in a few months or down the road, but we're still trying to talk about all this stuff and see how we can help the library and the community. Does that answer your question, Austin?
Yeah, I, I guess, um, I wanna make sure that I, we understand what, if anything, is at stake in the way of support, funding, or anything else, if something were asked of the us, uh, about DEI. Sharon, is there anything?
You know, I would go back to what Paul has said, and he's, he says it very s- very solidly, "The town of Amherst has set its priorities, this is who we are, this is who the town of Amherst is." And we're not going back on that. Now, it's easy to say that when there's no risk of losing funding, and so, you know, maybe, uh, maybe funding will be jeopardized, and then the Town Council and the Town Manager will have to make a more solid decision, but, um, but right now, I'm proud to say that I work in a town, um... that defends its beliefs. Uh, so I would like to think, and I continue to think, that our Jedi program is not going anywhere, and our DEI efforts, both along with Jedi and what the staff is doing, that that's not gonna stop. Yeah.
So, I, I just think it would be good to be as concrete as we can be, either directly through, with the town or to us. Uh, are there contracts that could be terminated, are there this, that, or the next thing? Lee?
Yeah, Farah, this is on a slightly different tack, track, but it's about Jedi.
Well, let's just hold this for one second.
Okay.
So maybe the answer is none, there is, there is nothing, but I do think we, you wanna keep a little bit ahead of the game so that if necessary contingency planning can occur, not just at the town level, but at the library level.
Yeah, no, the Jedi Committee, I really appreciate it, they actually came to me and immediately said, "What can we do to help?" And, um, so, so they are on it, staff are on it, we're ready at a moment's notice. Right now, the ESL program is the only thing, um, that has been cut. Um, it's, what I said to Jedi was, so it's a, it's a... there's a bigger picture going on because of the school, you know, so we've got the annual budget going on, and, and the school's appropriation from the town, and how the town's appropriation to the town, and the town's appropriation to the library, how all of that is gonna play out. Um, I have not been told uh, that I should budget for anything less than 4% for FY26. Um, so I, I'm happy about that, I'm, I'm nervous, sad for the town manager, and what it would mean if, when, if he has to take that entire cut over at Town Hall. Um, so that's a long way of saying our needs are bigger than just this one ESL program. Um, and, and so I have to look at it, look at the big picture regarding what our needs are. Um, and if people like the, like the Jedi Committee, or the Friends, or the Capital Campaign Committee, or anybody, if they're going to do fundraising, uh, for us, at this point, I would appreciate it if it were more broad as opposed to just one particular program over another, because that makes it easier to manage the entire library operating budget. Um, so, so we absolutely are thinking about it a lot every day, and, and stay tuned.
Thank you. Farah, sorry?
Can I quickly say something? Um, I did want to point out to, uh, point out one thing was, I know that the Global Village Festival on the 5th had a huge turnout, it was pouring, but people went to the middle school, and I think they were all like revved up after the ra- uh, rally. And I think they were all like revved up after the ra- uh rally in town, so they did do that. And the other thing I've been thinking ever since our Jedi meeting in terms of what Lynn needs for the ESL program. I think we could do some outreach to get volunteers to help hers, because why should she just have to do, you know, carry the load? I mean, I'd love to volunteer for that program anyways, so anyway, I think that's something we can talk about at Jedi as well. Sorry, Lee.
Lee?
Yeah, this is uh, uh, Monday's meeting, there was one speaker who spoke up as a representative of the BIPOC community. And I realize that that is um not necessarily the case, but anyway, who made the case that, you know, that the library is not in fact welcoming, et cetera. I, I, my, my question is, I mean, I, I think I think what, what's, what the Jedi Committee is doing and what Sharon is doing yeah, is, is terrific. And I just am wondering if there's some way to make it better known. We, you know, I know about it, we know about it because we come and we hear the report. You all know about it because you go to the meetings, but does the larger Amherst community that needs to hear this know about it? And maybe that's a, you know, maybe the answer is just absolutely yes, and it's just me who doesn't know that.
Farah?
Well, I feel like we had one, one meeting, we had a member of the community come and talk about helping during Black History Month. But in general, nobody shows up, and I think it's because people don't come to meetings where they don't have, you know, they don't have an opposing point of view. And they just don't want, like, they seem to show up at all the meetings where they can make public comment. I don't know, people just don't seem to want to show up, but one thing we could do is ask Pamela and Philip to, to put our meetings in their uh newsletter, maybe that would be helpful. So that's just one, thank you for uh.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, maybe you could go on the fabulous four-one-three, which I think is a, you know, a way of reaching lots of people in the community. I, I, anyway, if I have other ideas of, it's really about publicizing
Yep.
the fact that the library is a welcoming place and that we're aware of the need to be a welcoming place and we're, and we welcome input from the community.
Yeah.
Thanks, okay, thank you.
But I just, as they say in the verb, is it this nuanced that just a little bit? I, I agree with it, but I don't know that we wanna say we are a welcoming place. I think we wanna say we aspire to it and we're looking for ways to be even more um, uh than we, uh than we are, and I agree with you, I don't think it's about getting people to come to meetings. I think it's about letting people know in the community that this is a priority for the library, that we're not walking away from it. Um, now, I just have a question for you and Sharon. So um, would it make sense for the trustees to vote on a motion reaffirming the library's commitment to um the work of the Jedi Committee? Would it make sense for Sharon to reach out to other libraries, I wonder what's going on in the library world in Massachusetts? Um, to, you know, bring people together in support of these kinds of initiatives? But I think this is a particularly important moment for the library to be as, that's why I think Lee is right, as public as it can be about um the continuing commitment to uh the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I like that idea.
Lee?
Well, as, as they say in the movie, I'll have what he's having, I mean, I, I'm, whatever that motion is, I, I, if you make it as a motion, Austin, I will second it.
Well, I think I'm gonna make up sentences and Jean is gonna make them into a motion.
Okay.
Uh. In light of um in light of developing conditions at the national level, uh, the Jones Library, Board of Trustees of the Jones Library uh reaffirms its commitment to uh the work of um the work of achieving DEI goals um and affirms the centrality of that work uh to the, to the library's overall mission. So that's the kind of thing I think I would wanna say, it's got the part of, we wanna just say now, we're raising the flag for DEI. And that we recognize that raising the flag for DEI is uh essential to the work that the library does. But that, that was, that was like words in, in search of a thought.
I second.
She seconds words in, in search of a thought?
No, I think it was good. I saw Farah writing it down, and I'm sure Jean is writing it down, I think it was good.
Uh, Naomi doesn't wanna say anything, I mean, this, this level of responsiveness is really rewarding.
I.
So, I just, um, uh, since we have a Jedi Committee, maybe instead of saying, um, you know, DEI or something, uh, refer specifically to the work of the justice.
Right.
Diversity and inclusion.
Yeah, and, and, um, and so, and mention the, the Jedi Committee specifically, that's, that's our terminology for it.
Yep, great.
I also wanna point out that Pamela Nolan Young has been very clear about saying diversity, equity, and inclusion, she's not referring to it as DEI anymore, so we need to just put that in our language.
Any other thoughts? Jean, you wanna tell us what we're, what, what we're voting on?
I haven't finished wordsmithing it. But I have motion seconded approved in light of the evolving conditions at the national level. The Board of Trustees of the Jones Library reaffirms its commitment to achieving the Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committees' goals and confirms the centrality of that work to the library's mission, is what I have written.
Perfect.
Well, 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 I have a Lee Edwards point. Nobody beyond twelve people are gonna understand the Jedi Committee. So I wonder whether it just makes sense to say we reaffirm our commitment to achieving justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh rather than referring to a committee that people don't know about.
I could take committee out, so just say achieving justice, equity, and inclusion and confirms that. What does that sound?
You okay with that?
I think we need to say the work that our subcommittee has been do, I mean, refer to it, because we're doing the work.
How about, how about, yeah, how about the following, let's say, let's say what we just said and then just add and it's support for the Jedi Committee. That way you get, you're talking, people, I mean, nobody's gonna, but people will know what you're talking about if you reaffirm your commitment to the thing.
Okay.
Um, and then your support for the committee, is that, is that okay? Okay, Jean, you wanna give it another whirl?
See if I've got it, and I can always also work with Farah outside of the meeting, just to kind of fully tighten it up. Um, in light of evolving conditions at the national level, the Board of Trustees of the Jones Library reaffirms its commitment to achieving justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion goals. It confirms the centrality of this work to the library's mission and the Jedi Committee. I just sort of tack on.
After goals, you might say, um, and the work of the Jedi Committee. And then Sharon, we could post this on our website, or we could send it out with the next um newsletter. Um, we should communicate it to the town manager so that the town manager is not taken by, uh, taken by surprise. Okay, anything else? So I do have a question, I, I don't know maybe this is a budget committee question, so, but I'm gonna ask it to the um, so Sharon, can you say more about the ESL issue? On the note here, it says um that ESL will not be able to program for seniors on or about April thirtieth.
So.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, may I?
Yeah.
It says that there's been a loss of between forty and sixty thousand dollars. And my question is, rather than the ESL program having to stop, could we take forty to sixty thousand dollars from, and so they don't have to stop?
Uh, so. No, um, because this has, so this is about her health insurance and, and the costs related. Um, so she, we had to make a decision because this is, it goes through the town and we all get paid in advance and health insurance gets taken out of it, out in advance, it's not something that we could go back and forth on. So she is going to stop being full-time as of the last Friday in April. That being said, she is working with our local elected officials uh to possibly get an earmark so that she can finish for the rest of this fiscal year, so that would take her through June. Um, so your, your bigger question goes back to the budget question. I, I am worried about the four percent for FY twenty-six versus a possible three or two and a half percent increase. And I would like to hold on to as much money as possible until unless I know what's gonna go on for FY twenty-six. So I don't wanna give money that we currently have to this project if it can possibly go on through other means. Um, she has said she is going to try and fit it into her twenty-hour-a-week schedule. She feels a very strong commitment to these um, these eleven students. Um, so I do think it's going to continue, uh, even if it's on a volunteer basis on her part. So, so my recommendation is, no, we don't take that risk and tack on an additional sixty thousand dollars to this year's budget.
No, I wasn't thinking about tacking it on to this year's budget. I was thinking about, you have an endowment, and what's an endowment for? So is the, i- if you thought it would make a difference, if you don't think it makes a difference, then it doesn't make a difference. So I wasn't thinking we're gonna have to take it out of your, your budget, I was just wondering whether or not rather than see the program, whatever, but I take it you, you're not, you don't think that's the way to go?
Correct.
Okay, Lee?
This is just, um, probably, I don't know, it's not speculation, but I went to, I think it was a, a town council, a recent town council meeting, not, not this one, but the one before, where the schools came and asked for more money, or maybe it was a school committee, I don't know, I go to way too many meetings. But anyway, it seemed to me pretty clear that the town, i.e. Paul, and as far as I can tell, other other town council members are pretty clear that whatever goes on with the schools, the four percent for the library is, is a lock, that's not, it's not threatened. So I, I know I, you know, I, I can't guarantee that, but I don't think you should be losing additional sleep worrying about the loss of uh, how, whether they're gonna go more for the schools or not, that's the question. And where are they gonna find that money, that's the question, but they're not looking for the money to reduce you know, to, to reduce the library's share. That was my clear understanding of the, at least the sense of the meeting at that meeting I was at, not that I can remember which meeting it was.
Right. Paul has to give, you know, submit his budget uh May first, and then our budget request presentation will be on May sixth. I will certainly know after May first, but even after that, I, I don't know what conversations will happen within the Finance Committee, I anything can happen, so I, so I, I share you a little bit of your confidence. But I'm waiting. You muted yourself, Austin.
Anything else for PPP? All right, thank you, Tammy, thank you, um, Farah.
I, I have one thing, um, we hope to bring to the uh meeting in May, the, the evaluation forms.
Right.
If we are in, you know, moving and everything, it's gonna be challenging this year, but we'll take it one day, one week, one month at a time, so hopefully we can um manage to get some good feedback. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Next is the wonderfully named Budget and Investment Committee.
Okay, just about everything I have to say is in the minutes, which are in your packet, so I don't know if you want me to go through them, but uh, you know, so far the FY, the current budget seems to be on track. We've had conversations with Sharon about what we just talked about in relationship to the ESL program. Um, and by the way, there was somebody uh who spoke up on, at Monday's meeting in particular support of the ESL program, Sharon, so you and I might have a conversation about possibly getting back to that person if you think again that that's something that you want to do. Um, as of the end of March, the endowment was a little under, well, eight million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, and you know, we noted at the meeting what we had noted here, that um as has been indicated by multiple votes by the Board of Trustees and MOAs signed by the library and the town, these funds are available to support the expansion and renovation of the building. I, I, I should say as needed and certainly by the time that the project successfully concludes. Um, and then uh we noted that with gratitude to Nat, that the internal allocations to shifts to protect the endowment's funds were arranged with Vanguard Mercer and occurred before April first, thus avoiding losses uh that attend the current whatever's going on in Washington DC. And as of March thirty-first, the Woodbury Fund was at seven hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty, of which five hundred thousand remains pledged to the town of Amherst's plan to renovate and expand the Jones Library. Um, the Capital Campaign, it was was, was um de facto paused, but as I said, we, in the last week, we took in forty-five thousand dollars. And then the annual fund I already told you about, it still has a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and six, eighty-five dollars as of the end of March. That's it.
And for budget and investment.
Oh, and the, the last um item, and this just, we got, or Nat and um Sharon and I got a recent note, which will, I guess, take up the next Budget and Investment Committee, but I might as well, since it came, let you know, from Dan Voss, who is our, our person at Vanguard Mercer, that their uh, that are, the interim contract will end and will shift to being Mercer with some access to Vanguard, whatever. But. But, and so there's some shifts, but they seem to be, to me, to be mostly what I would think of as kind of housekeeping. You know, signatures have to change, and I'm sure passwords and all that kind of stuff is gonna have to change. It'd be very annoying, but what will remain consistent, I will just read this to you because you will like it. "You will continue working with the same trusted professionals who understand your goals. Your investments will remain consistent with your objectives. And most important, Austin, there will be no changes to your Mercer OCIO fee structure resulting from the portal and performance upgrades. They come at no additional cost. If you do not change the service and portfolio approach Mercer is providing to you now, your key, some things will not change." So we'll talk about it if, if, particularly if Nat has concerns. Well, I'll, we'll talk about it and then we'll come back. Otherwise, I, I would anticipate we might just say we're gonna keep on keeping on, but. So this is, so you have, you, you now have a whole month to think about this, if you want to.
That.
Yeah, the one, one thing I will just say to add to that is that I agree, it's, it's nothing really substantive changes with this, but, um, the one thing that, um, will change is that in the past, they've always deducted the fee from the funds directly. So the library has never, you know, cut a check to pay the fee. And so now, because they're more separate from Vanguard, even though the underlying investments are all Vanguard funds, they actually will send an invoice and those fees will be, you know, paid. And they will offer to, you know, take money from the funds and put it in our bank account, uh, before we pay. But, um, but just, it's a reminder that, that thirty thousand a year, I think, um, has been kind of invisible, um, in the past, but it becomes more visible when you actually have to write a check to pay it.
Nat, can you, um, just remind us of the change that was made in the endowment funds moving into money market? Number A, number B, remind us of the amount that was moved? And, uh, remind us of the consequence over the long term of moving from this to that? I think probably in the immediate term, it's great that it's out of the market, but, uh, how should we be thinking about that moving forward?
Right, so, uh, just to recap briefly, about half the funds that we had invested in the equity and bond, uh, mutual funds, was sold so that they could be invested just in a money market fund, uh, that doesn't have the same kind of, um, you know, market risk. So that is about four and a half million, let's say. Uh, so those funds, uh, would be, um, the first funds we would use to support the building project, assuming that there's a need to bridge the, um, time between that money is needed and when the donations come in. Uh, so we'll be able to draw on those funds and the money market. Uh, and then, um, we haven't discussed, but, but aside from that, the funds that are not in that money market, they will continue to be invested in the same way that we have in the past. You know, equity and bond funds, uh, in the same proportions. So think of it as, at this point, kind of two separate buckets. There's the long-term bucket that has the, uh, same type of asset allocation as in the past. And then we have the, uh, shorter-term bucket, uh, funds that we might need to use for the building project. So what we haven't talked about in detail is, you know, longer term. So once we use those funds, however much we might need, um, and then, you know, years down the road, when the funds come into the capital campaign, you know, how those go back into the, into the endowment and what sort of timing and what kind of investments, uh, decisions are made at that point. But that is years down the road. So at this point, we have that four and a half million or so that can be used to, um, support the building project.
What kind of interest rate is it getting in the money market fund today?
Yep, good question. It's, it's about, um, uh, four percent.
And the withdrawal happened before the crash?
Uh, yes, that was coincidental. Um, no one had the crystal ball, uh, no one knew it was happening. But, but, um, we had voted, uh, at the very end of March and, um, it took a couple of days for Vanguard or for Mercer to kind of do the paperwork and have a sign it and, uh, but it turned out that, those transactions were made on April 1st, and it was on April 2nd that the tariff, news, um, kind of hit the van. And so, uh, we avoided, um, a, a lot of that, uh, with respect to that, you know, four and a half million that we moved into the, um, money market.
Great. And, and Nat put all of his money into the market just before Donald Trump announced that, you know what you're doing there, Nat? Lee?
Yeah, this is just something I, I forgot to say that happened at the Budget Committee meeting. There were several members of the public there, one of whom raised a question, and I might have misunderstood the question, but asked a question wanting to know what the value of the endowment was and saying that we were underhandedly hiding the value of the endowment and never kind of, never reported it. And I, you know, I said, I reported it then, I reported it at the end of the meeting, and I said, I reported every month at the trustees' meeting and, and it's recorded in the minutes. So I'm not quite sure what, what the problem was and said this person could get back to me, and I have not heard. But it was just strange, that's all.
Yep. Uh, Gene?
Just had a question. Have we decided for any funds from the endowment that we might use for the renovation and expansion project? If we would actually do a, a direct withdrawal from the endowment? Or if we were thinking of leveraging that as collateral for, for a loan? I don't know, I don't recall where we landed on that, or if we've made any kind of decision like that yet.
Could you state it again?
There, there were some discussions in the past about options around how we would leverage the endowment for the renovation and expansion project if we needed to do so. And one of the options on the table was, um, obtaining a line of credit with the endowment as collateral. I was wondering, is that still in play?
Okay, Lee?
Well, my understanding, although maybe Austin, you're the one to speak, my understanding is that at the moment we're anticipating, the reason we switched the money was so that it would be available to be used, although I suppose you would titrate the interest that you would have to pay against what you anticipated losing. But it, you know, that, if you take it from the endowment, you don't have, you know, we don't have to pay it back on any particular schedule. So it seems like that's the way we're thinking about going. Should the Capital Campaign Committee not succeed in raising the total of what is owed? But we're a long way from being able to say that, and I hope we never have to say that. Okay.
Tammy?
I thought we had a motion on the floor that we haven't voted on, or did I miss something?
We haven't, we haven't voted on it because I started something else.
Good point, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy, for reminding us of the business to do. So I'm gonna come back to this. Nat, can you just hold off one second? Let's vote on this motion before we, you know, go off and not vote. So remember the motion was to reaffirm our commitment to, you remember all that? Okay, so I'm gonna ask for unanimous consent. Is there any objection? Okay, the motion is adopted by unanimous consent with special thanks to Tammy Ely, who was waiting strategically to remind us of that. So we, we saw you, Tammy. We know what you were doing.
No, it just dawned on me.
Oh, no, we're grateful. We're totally. Nat?
Oh, yeah, just on the, um, idea of, uh, borrowing funds. As I said earlier, since we're earning about four percent, um, right now, it, it's hard for me to imagine that we would be able to raise funding, um, that is lower than that. I will note, this, I don't really have any current indication from the, um, uh, the, you know, state, uh, I can't remember the name of it, but the State Financing Authority that, that, um.
Massachusetts Development Authority?
Yes, and since they are able to issue, um, tax-free municipal bonds, so typically at a lower rate than a lot of other, you know, taxable entities. But, so I don't have any indications from them, but just looking at just a basic website on Massachusetts municipal bonds, you know, um, going out like, you know, maturity of twenty thirty-eight or something. They're well over four percent. And so if you, you know, with fees and everything else, it's hard for me to imagine that we would have any funding that would be more attractive than using the, um, funds that we already have.
There are other possibilities we've talked about, which is trying to get a mortgage on the building. I mean, there, there are other ways if we needed to borrow money. But I think we need to be clear about something that maybe I'm not clear about. The four million dollars that's in money market, it's part of our endowment. So the value of our endowment is not no less, it's just distributed differently in terms of different kinds of investments. The question I have, and this is for you and Sharon, is, is the remainder of the endowment tied up with various restrictions? Uh, you know, some funds are restricted and some of this, are there significant restrictions on that other part of the funds that are gonna impede anything we might wanna take from the other part?
As Austin often says, I'm making this up. I, let's say that about a million of it has certain restrictions. But again, I'm making that up. I would have to go back and.
So it's something for the Budget Investment Committee to, to note. Um, if there are restrictions, how much, how much is restricted? You know, we're entering a down, I don't know what's gonna happen, but things are down and our needs aren't going down. So just knowing that other little piece of the puzzle, uh, I think it's just important to note. Okay, anything else for budget and investment? So many endowments, we think of Harvard as having a fifty billion dollar endowment. Lots of that, lots of those funds are not available for general use. You know, somebody gave five, five million, five billion dollars for the Larry Summers chair in whatever, and if you wanna use it to keep alive the Middle East Studies Center, you can't because it's restricted. So we just need to know whether we are gonna face any of that. Okay. All right, so now, friends of the Jones Library system.
Good afternoon. The annual, uh, public Friends meeting, uh, is going to be June 8th, Sunday, June 8th, at 3:00 PM at the Munson. There's going to be a program that, uh, is believed to be of interest to the public. Uh, I'm a little unclear about the interviewee, the, uh, mid, uh, a person named, I believe, Martha Ackman, who, uh, someone is gonna have to mention her, who she is, because I, I'm not clear about that. But anyway, it's open to the public from 3:00 to 5:00 PM on Sunday, June 8th. Pickleball scheduled for November 9th is moving ahead. That's all I can say about that. I was at a funeral, um, for the last Friends meeting, so I missed, uh, I missed out on the meeting, but, um, I got, did get to review the minutes copiously assembled by Secretary Elaine Donahue. And, um, I would make the observation that the Friends continues to keep careful eye on the money that it has distraction, discretion over. So, um, we are keeping close track of our money and, and doing our best to spend it wisely. Thank you.
Lee?
Yeah, the person who will be, uh, at the annual meeting is Martha Ackman, who has written a sort of biography of Emily Dickinson and, uh, biography of, uh, women softball players. And she has a, uh, she's completed, and I don't, it's gonna be published very soon, a biography of Dolly Parton. And this is what she's gonna be interviewed. I think Kathy Lanza is gonna be the in-conversation partner, and I think it should be of great interest to lots of people. And she, I mean, Martha, the, the, you can look her up on, you know, Google or whatever. Her books are widely and favorably reviewed, and she's yet another local author treasure.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Give our, give our thanks to the Friends. Okay, library director.
So staff right now are thrilled about the town council vote Monday night. Uh, and so right now, they are starting to think about a big move, uh, into an interim space and a lot, and at the same time, also plan the summer reading program. So they're very, very busy, and April vacation week, which is next week. I wanted to say, we've had, uh, Mr. Stephen Miller, Architecture and Design Photography. So, um, he has been here all day. Uh, he's outside taking very nice, high-quality photos of the building. And this is as part of our MOA between the library, the town, and the state, um, uh, through the, the 106 process. So that's going on. Um, we, the Capital Campaign Committee, is, um, contracting with Ginny Adams, uh, who has retired from PAL, but now is a contractor on her own. And she's going to be writing the narrative about the history of the library. It just so happens, she's very much an expert at this point. And, and then, um, Fine Gold Alexander, a couple of years ago, completed a Matterport scan of the building, uh, that was fun to watch, and the result is wicked cool. Uh, I think, I think you all have access to the link. If not, stay tuned. Uh, the library is going to pay annually to have that link posted, so that people can, can, uh, view it. And it's a, it's a very cool 3D model. It's like you can act like you're a patron and you're walking into the building and you can, you know, spin around and look at, uh, look at the building the way it exists today. So, uh, those, those three items are through the MOA process. And I also wanted to tell you that we met on, I wanna say Tuesday, with the Emerson Commission for Persons with Disabilities, uh, because we are applying for a variance from the state of Massachusetts so that we do not have to change our historic staircase. There are rules about making stairs, uh, bringing them up to code, about, um, the length of the, the railing and the size of the spindles and the height of the railings and, and all sorts of things like that. And so we're asking, again, as part of the MOA, we're saying that we are leaving the historic staircase alone, that it's, you know, historic and ornamental for the most part, uh, because we have other, you know, major staircases and, and an elevator for people to use. So, um, anyways, uh, we went to this commission, uh, to ask them for a letter of support, and they unanimously approved it. Um, they're a really wonderful, hard-working, smart group of people. So they submitted that letter on our behalf. And that's all my updates.
Question for the library director. So I have a couple of questions. Uh, Sharon, where, where is the money for this photographer coming from?
It'll come out of our Special Collections Money Market. There's a large chunk of money in, in that, in that account.
So it's not being charged to the building project?
Correct, yeah. This will be an ongoing, these are, like, we're treating this as operating, uh, fund expenses.
Um, I wanted to, uh, talk with you about, uh, something that was raised with Sharon. Sharon was approached by a group, I'm not gonna name the group, I think that is not, um, necessary. Sharon was approached by a group, I'm not going to name the group, I think that is not necessary, and asked to sign on to, I believe it was a lawsuit that this group is filing. And Sharon reached out to me and, you know, just wanted to chat with me about what it was and what should be done. I advised Sharon that before she could or should sign on to a lawsuit as a representative of the Jones Library, that she should consult with the Board of Trustees as well as the town manager. What I said was, as an individual, she's free to do whatever she wants. But as a representative of the Jones Library, I don't think the Library Director should get us involved in any litigation or any legal action, however noble its purpose, without the endorsement of the Board of Trustees. So I, I just wanted to ask you whether or not you think that's right? Whether you want to have a board policy? I was operating on the premise of the bylaws that no one speaks for us until they speak to us, but of course, that's not the Library Director, that's us. So I wanted to raise it and get people's thoughts because the Library Director may be approached by other groups wanting an endorsement here or sign a litigation there. Farah?
What is the lawsuit?
So I don't want to talk about the lawsuit. The, the question is if and when the Library Director is approached to sign on to a lawsuit in noble purposes, whether or not we should have a procedure as opposed to the Library Director just signs on to this lawsuit and we don't have any idea what the lawsuit is or what exposure we might have. So I want to talk, if we could, not about the particulars of the lawsuit, but about the general issue.
Can I just say one more thing?
You can, I'm a liberal, I have no standards.
Well, to me, it would depend on what the lawsuit was. Like this could be a lawsuit about someone slipping in front of the library. I, I mean, I don't know what it is. I would need more information before I could even have an opinion.
So again, my view is that before the Library Director gets involved in any legal action for any reason, that she's not doing it on her own, that she has the support of the Board of Trustees. But you're right, there may be things that come up that are perfectly routine. And it was just, there's just a kind of gap in our policies, which I want to try to fill if people want to fill it. Tammy and then Lee.
If, for instance, she was asked to sign on to the Attorney General's lawsuit against the cancellation of the Institute of Museum and Library Services, then for me, that's a core issue for, for a library. And that, to me, would be fine. But I, I agree with Farah that it depends. I mean, if a lawsuit would cause repercussions to the Board of Trustees, then I'm not sure. So I'm, I'm kind of, if it was something so core as supporting, you know, a suit against the government for the IMLS cancellation, I'd probably be on board with that. But I don't know, without knowing what a particular lawsuit is, I don't really know how to respond, you know, to say, go ahead or don't go ahead.
So we are in heated agreement, that's the point. The point is that before Sharon would have signed on to any lawsuit, it would be discussed with the board and we would endorse it or not endorse it. This is not, my idea is not to prohibit it, but just to say as good governance, at the end of the day, we are, we have a kind of fiduciary role. And I'm not saying she shouldn't sign on, if she should sign on, that we would stand in the way. Just that as a matter of policy, the Director of the Library should consult with the trustees about, I don't know, participation in any kind of legal matter as a representative of the library. Nat?
Yeah, I, I agree that, that if there is something that the library should be a party to, it should come to the trustees to vote on it. And in my view, it's kind of the same as, as, you know, whether, you know, signing a, any legal document. I'm not sure that Sharon has the ability to bind the the, the organization with her signature when it comes to, you know, financial contracts and, and other things. And I certainly don't think that, that for a lawsuit, if the Jones Library were to be either initiating or adding their name as a plaintiff, that it would be the Library Director who would make that decision and sign. I would think it would be the President of the, of the Board of Trustees.
No, it won't be him, but the, the, the question isn't just about who signs, because it could be Library Directors all doing something. The question is what, if any, authorization does Sharon need, sorry, Lee? Your hand is raised, I was ready.
Yeah, okay. I, I, in, in, in general agreement with, you know, everything that's been said. And the question is, where's the comma between the main part of the sentence and as a library director? I mean, I think if, if, and I would trust Sharon to understand this. If the reason that she's being approached to sign is because of her position as the Director of the Jones Library in Amherst, then definitely she should come to the trustees and we should approve it or not approve it, we should just, whatever. But it, you know, and, but that's it. If she's approached to sign on for something that she's a citizen and has nothing to do with her position as a library trustee, she's on her own and she doesn't need to come to us to figure out how she should act as a public citizen. And I think the distinction, and if, if there's any ambiguity, then maybe she should come to the trustees. But it's usually pretty clear if you're being asked to sign on because of your position. And that, yeah, that we should, we should discuss.
Sharon, are you comfortable with this?
It's so funny. I would love it to be, I would love for you to approve Austin's motion because I think a motion is coming. Yeah, I think the Library Director should have to come to you all regarding legal matters. And then, you know, we can, we can pick and choose. And I'm happy to tell you about this particular issue because it almost could fall under topics not anticipated, if, if you want to.
So what I would hope to do is we could discuss this separate from the thing. As I understood it from Sharon, that thing has already sailed. Is that right?
No, during this meeting, I've gotten another note, so we can talk about that specific after you vote.
Well, the reason I ask this, Sharon, is I think these matters have to be a little bit carefully prepared. So what was shared with me before, I have no idea what the litigation would be. I would want to see what it was. And my, my intention, if people are in agreement with this, is to say this matter should be discussed by the PPP as an amendment to our policies and procedures. And the motion should come back to us from the PPP as an amendment to our policies and procedures. I wasn't going to propose an amendment, I mean, a motion now. Are we all good?
I, I just have one question about if this is something that needs to be done or addressed. If you, if you go to PPP and then the trustees, does that prohibit her with a time lag from getting a, a quick response?
Yeah, it, it would take too long for this particular action. And I, but I still agree. So this organization who has come to me, you know, they said, okay, I need you to sign on right now. But I agree wholeheartedly with what Austin said. Some research has to be done. I, I don't know what I'm signing here. And, and even once I read the documentation, I still have to bring it to you guys and you guys need to read it so you guys know what you're signing. And so them saying, oh, okay, we've extended the deadline another 24 hours, it's still, it's not enough time.
I think it's important to get clear about this because every 20 minutes, I am getting things to sign on to. And I don't know what's going to come next to Sharon and whatever. And I think we should have a policy and procedure. Are we good? So refer to the PPP. PPP can discuss it and then, and then come back. And again, I want to be clear, I'm not proposing this as a barrier to Sharon signing on. I'm proposing it as a protection for Sharon as doing our, you know, we're trustee. Yeah, so it's not a barrier.
Okay.
So what if it's something that I understand what you're saying about it going to PPP and then coming back here, but I'm seeing that going around for another month or so? So what if it is something that comes up and Sharon feels she wants to sign on to it? And she, she's prohibited from doing that because we have not had a, we have not had a motion or we've not had, made a decision?
Well, if it makes you feel any better, you know, we're going to go to PPP with this particular motion. But it, once it's approved in going forward, I feel very comfortable reaching out to all of you and saying, hey, can you guys meet in two days' time? And then we can talk about it. And so then you would have two days to research and understand before a vote, if that makes sense.
Farah, what, what is, let's kind of, I just feel like there's clouds here and I want to try to clear out the clouds. So are you worried that this is going to interfere with the capacity of the Library Director and the Jones Library to get engaged in litigation or lawsuits that we might want to support?
Yes, because I feel like often committees or boards or whatever, they come and then they move it down to another committee and that committee moves it down somewhere else and it gets kicked around and time is wasted. And I feel like we're all sitting here right now. And why wouldn't we just?
Okay, okay. So here's, here's an alternative. The alternative is we'll make a motion and we'll instruct Sharon. My thought was that we wanted to do it as part of kind of looking at policies and procedures. But if there's a sense of it would be good to do this now, we can do it. It doesn't change anything because if we do it now and Sharon gets a request for joining the litigation on Friday, she's still going to have to come back to the, to the, to the board, right? So I don't know that it changes a whole lot. Another alternative is in the interim, before the policy is adopted, the board could vote to authorize the President of the Board to give the temporary authorization. But again, I don't, I don't, I don't know that in the next 30 days, you know, something's going to, going to happen. But if the board wants to adopt the motion now, somebody could make the motion now and we could vote on it. And then you don't have to go back to the PPP. I'm happy either way. I just thought you got a committee looking at policies. But Nat, what would you like to do?
So I like the idea of having the PPP look at this. And one question that I have, and I hope the PPP Committee will look into it too. As a town employee and, you know, head of the library, you know, what sort of rules or expectations are there in the town? So I think we need to be aware of that as well.
Yeah, I asked Sharon, I said, you should be consulting with the Board of Trustees and consulting with Paul Bachmann. Okay, Tammy?
I have no problem with it coming to PPC, PPC, but if PPP. If there's something that Sharon feels really strongly about and there is a time limit, I would have no reservations about her conferring with you, especially as you're a lawyer, that would, would, you know, give her solid advice if there's something that had to be done right away, decided right away. So I'm of two minds, fine coming to PPP. But if there was something that had a very strong time limit and she felt strongly about it, then I think an alternative would be for her to confer with you. And if you're willing to make the decision on behalf of the board.
Here's what I'd like to propose, because I, I just have the sense that we're really kind of in agreement on something, but we're, we're just not able to articulate it. I believe that the appropriate thing to do would be to have this discussed in the PPP. Nat's given us yet another reason to do it. In the interim, if something comes up where Sharon feels the need to do this thing, Sharon can always convene a meeting of the board and we can talk about it. And that way, everybody is fully, everybody is fully informed. We can do that while the policy is in germination. But Farah, my view is that we, this should not go into, we've got to send it to yet another committee or another committee. PPP comes back, frames the motion and we vote, and we vote on it, I would hope. Sharon, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Okay, are we all comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry to.
No, it's good.
But I wanted you all to know about it because I just saw there was a gap and we needed to fill the gap. Okay, anything else that needs to be said? Well, for those of you that celebrate, I hope you have a, oh, I'm sorry, Nat, are you back?
Oh, so just a footnote to the earlier discussion. I just looked at the Form 990, not maybe not the most recent one, but that has the restricted funds. And it was 1.1 million that are gifts with donor restrictions.
So Tammy, are you, is your hand fresh or is that just the remainder? Okay, so I was just going to say, for those of you that celebrate, I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful Easter. And I will look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care, everyone.